We'll call the Monday, April 27, 2015, regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. As is our custom, we reserve a few minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. The public may comment on any matter except items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. We generally limit that to three minutes. I do see a few people in the audience, but I'm guessing nobody is wanting to address us. Ed? No? Okay. Well, with that then, we will move on to our first agenda item, and it's Envision Eugene Adoption Package Components. And I'm going to go to Teri.
I have a couple things.
Can I get?
And I'll hand it to a listener.
Okay.
But first of all, that was pretty exciting to hear you say UGB adoption package. A moment. Good. As you know, we're moving into preparing the different components for jobs, parks, and schools, and I just wanted to give you a heads up on where we are with the housing recommendation. We presented that to council back in February, and there's been a period of kind of seeing if any additional information was going to come out in response to that. And tonight, actually, at 5:30, we're going back to council to give them the latest information that we have. So that's what's going on with housing. If you guys have any questions.
Is the plan to present the new population estimates, then?
We are bringing them information about that. Of course, they're draft proposed numbers at this point, but yes, we're going to walk them through the process that the state is in currently formulating a new population forecast and tell them what that would mean, basically, if they were going to want to use that.
Is there any request for action tonight?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions before she turns it over? Okay.
And is the objective, then, after council, will you, what would be the next steps in terms of bringing it to Planning Commission?
Well, we still need to schedule action for the council. So once they provide that action, then we'll have their direction to us in order to prepare that package. So then we would have a similar meeting to this, once we've had a chance as staff to outline those items.
Great.
So, yeah. So for, just so that I'm getting it straight, tonight, you're going to go to them, you're kind of going to be looking for direction from them, right? A little bit as to whether they want to include, I mean, I read the AAS, and I read what was in it. Kind of, do you want us to look at this new population as part of our formulation or not? Is that kind of what you're hoping to get from council this evening? And then if that's the case, then you'll take that, whatever direction they give, and put it into the plan that you're going to implement to bring back to them for action?
Right. So that is the objective, is to bring them the information we have.
Right.
And to ask them if there's anything else they need before directing us.
Mm-hmm.
So there isn't an action item scheduled.
Right.
And it's presented as informational intentionally. Our recommendation hasn't changed, but there's some new information about forecasting.
Right.
Bringing that to them, and we'll see what they want to do with it.
And then one other question then would be, in that informational thing, are you going to be talking to them about the option of possibly moving forward at the recommendation that you guys were thinking of, and then the urban reserve backup plan, you know, looking at the new population numbers with the urban reserves?
So urban reserves are part of the recommendation that we gave back in February. So, yeah, that'll be kind of my role, actually, is to remind them of what we presented in February as the staff recommendation for housing. And that does include certain actions inside the UGB, launching the monitoring program, and then initiating planning for urban reserves.
Perfect. Thank you.
Bill?
Yes.
Question, Teri. There was some discussion, I think, at the CRG that we had with city manager regarding the belief that we couldn't move into an urban reserve process until final adoption or final action on the current urban reserve expansion, which would have to include residential. Did we ever get clarity on that? Meaning, we couldn't just go ahead with what's here in this package, not do residential or not make a final decision, then move into urban reserves? That we had to make final decisions for residential expansion, if necessary or not, before we could move into urban reserves?
Yeah, that's our current understanding. We're still looking into what might be available for the council to do within the law. But that was our understanding going into the meeting, where John was asking people's opinion about that. It's kind of a nuance, because urban reserve planning, we know are important, that we know that people want to do them regardless. So at this point, it's more of a legal nuance of what order things have to happen in.
Okay.
But that's not the focus of the work session tonight.
Okay. Thanks. All right.
On to jobs, parks, and schools.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So, as you know, I'm going to be talking about the pieces that are going to be part of the UGB adoption package for jobs, parks, and schools. As you heard, I mean, we're not, this doesn't go in, so I won't be diving into any pieces that are part of the residential, although there are a lot of similarities and potentially some overlap. But the focus of today is really on the jobs, parks, and schools package. I think one way you can think of it, because you have a lot of experience of that, is thinking of it as a giant land use application. It's really not that much unlike what you saw for eWeb, other than the fact it's going to be a lot larger of a package. It's going to have a lot of those same components. So what I will do is just kind of walk you through what those pieces are, what the various amendments and documents are, and then flag those that you're going to be seeing before we start the formal adoption package. So obviously, you have a role in the formal adoption process. There'll be a joint public hearing with you and the Lane County Planning Commission, and then recommendation to your, to the city council, and they'll be providing a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. But before that, we do want to bring a number of these components back to you for your review. And so I will definitely flag what those are as well. So just as a reminder, and I just had to correct a typo on your handout, the whole area, I believe, is about 924. But the jobs area in Clear Lake, there's about 648 acres. About 455 of those would be buildable. And then the proposal also includes 222 acres for the Golden Gardens Park, and then 54 acres for a Bethel School site. So just to remind you that that's what the expansion area is for Clear Lake. And then also, the expansion for Santa Clara is 35 acres for a community park kind of north and east of Madison Middle School in the Santa Clara area. In addition to the expansion areas, we're also planning for employment and public lands inside the urban growth boundary. So you will end up seeing a number of pieces that actually address employment and public lands inside the urban growth boundary. So while the focus of this, and I think what, you know, most people think about with this package, is actually the expansion, it's all jobs, parks, schools, and other public lands as well. So just starting, and I kind of just arranged this by, you know, the highest order of land use applications, as you might be familiar with. So there will be amendments to the metro plan, both diagram amendments and text amendments. The diagram, obviously, we have to put the expanded urban growth boundary on a map. We also have to redesignate those lands. Currently, they're in the county, so we will need to put a city designation. And obviously, for the employment lands, we'll be putting in employment designations, and then government and education for the school site, and parks and open space for the two park sites. And then in terms of the text amendments, refresh your memory, we did the enabling metro plan amendments back in November or fall sometime, and those kind of set the way for us to have our own comprehensive plan and to have some of those elements inside our own comprehensive plan. So we know at least one of the text amendments we'll be doing as part of this package is saying that the economic development element in the metro plan will no longer apply to Eugene, and we will cover that in our own local comprehensive plan. And there may be some other small tweaks, just to reference Eugene's urban growth boundary and some, a few other things as part of those metro plan amendments. In terms of the comprehensive plan, we'll be adopting Phase One, which will include these chapters. There'll be some holes, because housing will still be relying on the metro plan until we come forward with housing. Same with a number of the other chapters. But the first phase will include a section on public involvement, you know, how do we make changes to this particular plan and how was it created? Economic development, as I mentioned, this will house our Eugene-specific policies as it relates to economic development. We'll also have at least a portion of the chapter on compact development and urban design as it relates to sort of the corridor planning for jobs. And we'll have the transportation section, which is actually, will be our transportation system plan, which I'll get to a little bit more in a minute. And then administration and implementation, how to use the plan. Actually, this would be where we're going to make changes to the plan, what does that entail, how does it entail? And then we'll be really clear that this is Phase One of the comprehensive plan. There will be more chapters to come, and we'll try to make it clear where you need to rely on the metro plan and where the comprehensive plan also, you know, kind of rises to the top. This is one of the things we will be bringing back to you. You've already seen a draft of the economic development policies. We've taken your feedback on that. They're currently undergoing legal review to make sure, actually, the state law is fairly prescriptive in some regard about what we add for economic development policies. And we're working on these other chapters as well. Next month, there's a work session with you all, and we'll be bringing our work to date on the first three bullet points, the public involvement, economic development, compact development, and urban design. So we'll be bringing that to you next month, another work session in June to follow up. And then at this point, we are planning an open house in July to share more at that So these are really what we believe are legally required to for our own adoption. We will, Carolyn came, and I think it was November as well, and talked to you about the box set that included the vision and the community design handbook. While those aren't required for adoption, we are still planning to have pieces of those ready as well, and that's why we have Jen here today. And so we're going to, we'll dive into that after I've gone through all of kind of these more legalistic required components, get to the fun stuff. In terms of refinement plans, this is something that Emily Jerome is researching for us, and we're not sure if we actually need to make any changes to refinement plans. I just wanted to flag it that it, we may or may not need to amend them to reconcile any conflicts with our new local plan. We just want to see how it references, those plans reference other plans and see if we really think we need to make something. So there may or may not be changes here. So Public Facility and Services Plan, as you know, that shows whether or not we can serve areas. So we've been working closely with our partners in Public Works and with eWeb to see what it would take to serve both the expansion areas and areas inside the urban growth boundary. And we're required to look at water, wastewater, and storm water in this plan. And so for some of these areas, we'll be updating the public facilities plan, and we'll be updating the map by adding projects and a rough cost estimate and timing for those. So only certain size projects go in the public facilities plan. More detailed information and some of the smaller projects actually just go straight into the agency's master plans and capital improvement plans. And actually, the timing of this is fantastic, because eWeb is midstream, if not, ha, that was funny, eWeb, cracking myself up. eWeb is getting close to wrapping up, actually, their master plan for providing water inside the urban growth boundary, kind of just updating their master plan. And the city is working on updating their wastewater master plan. So it's been great to coordinate and collaborate with those agencies and staff. And so just as I mentioned, only certain size projects will go in the public facilities plan, and I'll give you an example. For wastewater, it's pump stations and lines of a certain size. And so if an area just needs, you know, small lines or a private pump station, then those actually won't go in the PFSB. We'll document that they're needed, and they'll go into a master plan, but they won't go into the public facilities plan. So, but we will have all that information on what it will take to serve everything. Now, I know Kurt has been to you, Kurt Yider has come to you about the transportation system plan. As you know, we are working on creating and adopting a local transportation system plan. We've always had trans plan, which serves both the regional and our local plan. And we will have our Eugene-only transportation system plan. And the timing of this has actually been great. We believe we will be able to adopt the transportation system planned and the UGB concurrently, if not, I mean, maybe not the same night, but really close in alignment, which is fantastic. So we need the transportation system plan to support our existing and planned, either, you know, jobs, parks, and schools, or, you know, housing densities inside the urban growth boundary. And so it will contain policies, goals, projects to accommodate all of those things. And I know that Kurt plans to come back to you in early to midsummer to give you a status update of that. He's been, I believe you guys saw the goals and policies. Now, there's a pretty tight project list, and I know that he's been drafting sections of that, so I was getting pretty excited to share what he has to date. Also, as part of the transportation system plan, I think you'll recall that you've adopted, or the council's actually adopted, trip caps. Most recently, as part of the employment and industrial code amendments, there were some trip caps. I think there was one as part of the residential redesignations, and then there's an older one on the Lane Memorial redesignation site. And so those will come off as well. Probably the timing at this point, we're still working on that, but it will probably come off after the adoption of the transportation system plan. So pretty, if not simultaneous, then shortly thereafter. So that's actually pretty exciting news, because in some cases, some of these lands are, you know, capped in terms of the amount of development they can do. So that will be good news. The next bundle of amendments are amendments to our land use code, and that's Chapter Nine, both to the version that applies within the city limits as well as to the version that applies between the city limits and the urban growth boundary. We call that the urban transition area code or our UTA code. So that one, we administer for Lane Counties, but it's fairly similar to the code inside. So in terms of land use code amendments, I think the one you're probably most familiar with is adding an overlay zone to the Clear Lake employment expansion area. And the purpose of that one is twofold. It's to make sure that we protect the large lots that we say we needed and to address environmental health considerations that have been raised about, you know, allowing uses. Other code amendments include reconciling any references to the metro plan, if those need to be replaced by the local comprehensive plan reference, or, you know, in addition to, then we'll be making those changes. We also need to add reference to our new local comprehensive plan and reference to how, you know, what kind of process do you need to go through to make any changes or amendments to that particular plan. In terms of the Clear Lake expansion overlay, there has been a fair amount of public outreach already with nearby property owners and some other interested parties as well. There's a subcommittee that involves some of you from the Planning Commission, as well as members of the Sustainability Board and the Human Rights Board, people from the area and the Toxicx Board. And I know that Zach is working on this, Zach Galloway, and has made pretty good progress, and will be back to you in June with a draft for your review. So that's pretty exciting, that's coming to fruition. And then, moving on, zone changes. These are pretty simple, you know, for the expansion areas are the only areas that we know that will be rezoning. We'll be adding the Clear Lake overlay, obviously, to the employment expansion area. We'll be adding the commercial airport safety overlay to the Clear Lake expansion area as well, given its proximity to the airport. All of the expansion areas will get what we call our UL or our urbanizable land overlay, and that just signifies that they haven't been annexed yet. The north side of Clear Lake will be rezoned to light-medium industrial, and then all of the other expansion areas are just going to be zoned, rezoned to agricultural, and that's really just as a holding zone, and that will allow them to continue with their agricultural uses until such time they're ready for development. So we really wanted to make sure that, you know, they can continue their grazing or cutting the hay if they need to on those lands. Let's see. Now, in terms of, Rick.
Question on that. You said zoning. Do you mean plan designation?
No, that was, no, I'm talking zoning, just zoning. So the plan designation of the employment areas will be either light-medium industrial or campus employment.
Has anyone checked with the county assessor to see what that will do to the tax base on the, on what becomes I-2?
Now, the, I know that the tax rate itself doesn't change until property is annexed.
I'll fly that for Zach to follow up.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I always thought we were talking about a light-medium plan designation, not a zone designation.
Well, we are on the north side. It would be a light-medium.
I think that's something that probably, yeah, should be flagged and researched.
Okay.
You'd hate to see all that land, all of a sudden, be revalued based on industrial.
Okay. No, I will, I will follow up. I had had initial conversations with the assessor's office about that.
And I guess as long as, as long as we're there, I, my question, I think, is maybe similar to what Commissioner Duncan is saying. So when we have these areas brought into the UGB, and will they then be, will the zone change actually, I guess, my question is typically you annex, and then you have to go through another process for a zone change. Are we combining that in a way so that when people annex, the zone change is automatic to the plan designation, or will they then have to do a separate process like they do now? It gets cumbersome and expensive.
Right. No, I think that's a good point. I mean, I don't know that we've, we were actually just trying to figure out how they could maintain their existing uses at this time, but I think that's, I mean, that's something we can look into.
As long as they're not annexed.
There are a couple property owners, and I just know this because we've talked to them about their future plans, and they prefer to be rezoned at the get-go, because then they don't have to do it later.
Right.
So it may be that some of them go immediately to I-2 and the overlay zones
Mm-hmm.
as part of the UGB adoption package, but we don't have those details.
Okay.
Yeah.
And before we're interrupted, all of Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, no, I was just curious, would the I-2 still allow agriculture? In other words, if you just.
Yes. Yeah, and that's why we felt comfortable suggesting that those would be, the ones north of Clear Lake would get to immediately go to I-2, because that would allow continuation of any agricultural uses.
I also had one other question back earlier, just when you're talking about public facilities, will that include, like, fire and emergency services?
Not in that particular plan.
Just one.
No, no, that's a good, good question.
Okay. Commissioner Mills has a comment or question?
Yeah, I just have a question, and it's back a ways. It has to do with the, you mentioned the removal of trip caps.
Yes.
And I guess I'm a little confused about how that happens, that they could be summarily removed.
Well, they don't, it's not a wand waving by any means. It means that we've accommodated them through the transportation system plan, either that there's projects in place that will.
You mentioned Lane Memorial. That, that was a trip cap based upon congestion on West 11th.
Yes. Yes.
Which is, which I believe that constraint had to do with the fact that it got into ODOT. Is that true?
Right. And so one of the things that we're looking at through the transportation system plan is actually changing what we consider congested, changing the level of service and the volume of capacity.
You're going to buy more congestion and take the trip caps off. I'm going to, I'm putting words in your mouth.
Not sure those are the words I would use, but yes.
That's what I would use. Okay. So we're buying more congestion and taking the trip caps off, and I think as long as we're talking about city roads and streets, it's okay. But when you get into West 11th, I guess I'm a little puzzled how that happens, given that that's.
Right. Well, we, yeah, I mean, we have been working closely with ODOT, and that is actually one of the, one of the options they do provide for is alternative mobility standards, is what they call it.
Mobility is maybe the wrong word, but okay.
Right. But it's in recognition that we can't build our way, we can't continue to add lanes to West 11th to reduce that congestion.
Thank you.
So, how about if I continue on?
Yeah, let's let you continue.
I think we're going to have plenty of time for questions.
Yeah, I think we will.
Yeah. All right. So the next set of documents is really our technical documents, and I, you've heard about a number of these, but they will need to be kind of adopted as, you know, appendixes to our comprehensive plan. And that includes our economic opportunities analysis, which I know you've heard about. That's really what identifies our need, our employment need for the next 20 years, both commercial and industrial. The buildable lands inventory will show the vacant lands inside the urban growth boundary as well as the new areas, so that will identify, you know, what lands are vacant, so we'll be able to monitor that. The public land need summary identifies how much land we think we need for parks, schools, other public facilities, and those have been deducted also from our buildable land, so we, that will be an attachment as well. We will also have the Bethel School District Long Range Facility Plan, and that's really what justifies the need for their parks or their school site, sorry, there in the Bethel area. And then simultaneous with this, we need to repeal some documents that will then become obsolete, including the commercial and the industrial land study that will be essentially replaced by our updated economic opportunities analysis. Plus, they're really old. And then legal findings, which I know you're familiar with. So, yeah, all those amendments and documents will need to be supported by legal findings. You know, we believe we've been following the law all along as we've been doing this. That's what's been guiding us in some regards, but we need those findings and analysis that show that we meet all the applicable statewide planning rules and statutes and administrative rules, our local code as well. This is going to be a fairly hefty document. Emily's been at work outlining the whole thing for us, and it's, it's going to be many pages for sure. So we are writing it, you know, to meet state law, but we're also trying to write it in a way that, because you guys, I'm sure, will be some of the ones who will be interested in reading it, so we'll be trying to write it in such a way that it actually makes sense as well, because if we just follow the format of the state law, it's kind of jumbly. So we're trying to make it an organized, usable document to the extent we can. But again, it will be like, just kind of like a giant land use application. You're going to have a very large stack of legal findings to go through as well. And then, so this is, again, the box set. I think you might remember that picture. The comprehensive plan, which is our regulatory component, which will have the policies, and it is part of the box set, and I, you probably recall what Carolyn talked about when she was here in, I believe it was November, but we'll have the community vision, the urban forum, community design piece, and then the implementation and monitoring piece. And I'm going to turn it over to Teri.
Yeah, I just have a couple things to say on this, one slide, and then I'll hand it over to Jen. The point I want to make is that there's been work ongoing in all four components of the box set, so that feels good to report on. The vision is really the piece that tells the story of Envision Eugene. It's non-regulatory, it's more explanatory and descriptive, tells the story of the seven pillars and why we're doing this work that we're doing. So that will come to you when it's in a little bit more polished form. The comprehensive plan, we're going to have specific work sessions with you on. So we already kind of outlined the components that will be coming forward. And urban forum community design is where we're going to house the community design handbook. And just, Jen will give you a sneak peek, show you what's going to be in that document and the process for taking that forward. And then lastly, the implementation and monitoring part of this box set is largely about our monitoring program, which has been a part of the recommendation back since 2012, very important in terms of implementing pillar seven, which is all about monitoring and flexibility. And a lot of work has been going on, on this program at the Technical Resource Group level. So as Rick knows, this has been a big part of the recent work, and it will be a big part of the upcoming work to get that program into the shape it needs to be in for adoption. It'll be adopted by ordinance as part of the urban growth boundary and really spell out what the plan is to monitor our growth over time. So that is very much an active discussion at the TRG level, and when it's ready for your review, we'll bring it back to you as, as part four, basically, of the box set. Any questions about that? Okay. We'll launch into Jen.
So as Teri mentioned, this is a sneak peek. This is in draft form of the. Um, this is in draft form of the community design handbook. It's a non-regulatory guidance, um, piece that complements area plans and design codes, um, such as the South Willamette Area Zone, Special Area Zone, that we're gonna be discussing even more at an upcoming meeting soon, and also some future area planning projects. It identifies specific ways that the built environment can create a more healthy, walkable, and prosperous, livable community. It's also designed to be a really accessible tool that the entire community can use to participate in these design discussions. Um, the way it's organized is it's, um, broken into five sections, and I'll be showing you sample pages, one from each section, um, that I don't, and the sections identify kind of broad areas, um, and they move from very large-scale environmental, um, ideas down to very kind of specific architectural design concepts. And within each section, there are design principles that, um, identify important concepts within the section, and then the guidelines provide pretty concise statements about how to achieve, um, these principles. So the first section, um, talks about kind of the environmental scale. It's integrate nature and design for Eugene's climate, and this specific principle talks about creating successful public spaces, and, um, then the guidelines get into details about that. And, you know, we've tried to use a broad range of, you know, examples of different types of public spaces that we have in Eugene, and we've tried to be, it's, a lot of these photos are placeholders, but we've tried to really incorporate places in Eugene and really applicable to Eugene. And what's really interesting is just in the few years that we've been working on this, we have a lot more of those spaces to be able to use as examples, which is really great. Um, the next section is invoke a sense of place, and this particular sample, um, is, the principle is contribute to complete walkable neighborhoods. And this looks really specifically at, um, kind of 20-minute neighborhoods and how to, ideas that will make neighborhoods more walkable. This section is embrace Eugene's most successful patterns, and the principle is create a network of complete streets. And so this talks not just about streets, but, you know, multimodal transportation, and this looks at things kind of at the transit and street scale, um, and also just connections about, you know, how you can connect from a trail system to a walkable street to, you know, where you might be going. This section is bring the streets to life. Um, this particular principle is enrich the streetscape, and so this is now coming down to the pedestrian realm more specifically. How to create really walkable streets, things, um, within the pedestrian realm that lead to, um, you know, walkability, um, you know, uh, you know, having, you know, wide enough sidewalks, um, interesting, you know, street facades, um, weather protection, things like that. And then this final one brings it down more to a specific building scale, which is leave a building legacy. This particular example looks at transparency, and so this shows different ways that transparency, you know, leads to a, a better built environment, um, and having, you know, abundant transparency, having lighting that spills out into the pedestrian realm, having operable windows. And those are the five sections, um, and we're targeting June, um, the week of about the 21st for an open house, so you can have a space saver on your calendar.
Saves the date.
Yeah. So.
Could you tell us about the format, how it's gonna be?
Um, yeah, so it's gonna be, um, an 11 by 17 and, um, folded and then staple along the side, and it's gonna be a pull-out portion of the, um, bigger comprehensive plan, the box set. And we'll also be, um, have it available, you know, at the counter here and be handing it out in, you know, a variety of ways. And as I also mentioned, it's supposed to be really accessible so that people have, you know, the, the guidelines and the, you know, even the vocabulary to be able to talk about design, whether you're a community member, you know, you don't have to just be an architect to be able to use this design guide, and I think that's a way that it really differs from other communities, um, where it is kind of more specific to, you know, building, um, very specific, you know, very specific to, you know, um, architectural design specific, where this one's a little bit more comprehensive. It looks at things from the big picture down and then provides, um, people with, the community members specifically with the vocabulary to be able to talk about, um, that in area planning, for instance.
All right. Thank you.
That's all we have.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Well, and as I mentioned earlier, we're going to, as we get into more and more depth on the things that are coming before us, uh, we're, we're going to be trying, uh, similar to what council does, as a, as far as a three-minute go-around for us to, uh, help us make sure that everybody has an opportunity to, uh, get their questions out on the table. And we, we've talked this morning, we're gonna try it today, since today's a little, little less stressful and it's kind of softball today, and, uh, we'll give it a try and see how it works for us to help us get used to it. So with that, I'll start the queue. Commissioner Borowski, you have a question?
I just had a question.
Yeah.
On a three-minute, is it three-minute by the commissioners questioning?
Yes.
Or is it three minutes with answers in total?
No, no, just three minutes.
Just the commissioners, three minutes.
Three minutes on our question. We'll hold our question three minutes. And, and, and Teri's gonna, yeah, Teri's gonna be our, our timer.
My first time, it'd be nice.
Yeah, well, that's why we thought we'd do it today, is to get, get a dry run going, but, um, no, the, the idea is for us to limit our questions or remarks to three minutes and, uh, and that so that we can, uh, go through everything. And again, we are, uh, scheduled to be done before, at or before 1:00 today, you know, and so we thought this would be a good opportunity to try that. So I'll open it up for, uh, any commissioners that want to jump in. This might be really easy. Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the Public Facilities and Services Plan Amendment document and the Transportation System Plan Amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or adoption. So will these, both these documents also be phased similar to the comprehensive plan, or will you, will they try to be comprehensive and include the resident?
I know, I mean, the transportation system plan, um, is gonna be comprehensive. Okay. At this point, I mean, that's, that's the plan. They can just pick a study area and adopt the plan for that particular study area. Um, so that will, that will definitely be comprehensive. The Public Facility and Services Plan, um, these are, I mean, I would characterize them as more surgical amendments. We have an existing document, this is just some updates to that document. We do share it with Springfield because there really is a lot of regional planning, particularly when it comes to wastewater, um, uh, maybe not so much with water because they have, they go through sub and we go through EWEB, but at this point, I mean, that's something we're thinking about maybe longer-term, um, changes that would split it a little bit more, but at this point, we're keeping the, the regional plan.
Okay. Can I ask my other two questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, my other one is, this one is just, um, is this what you're calling it? Eugene Comprehensive Plan versus the Metro Plan?
Yes.
Just wanted to.
Yes, right. So, yeah, it's our local comprehensive plan. We're calling it Eugene Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, very straightforward.
Yes.
Yeah, lucky.
Just describes what it is.
And can you remind me, and I know the vision, but the Envision Eugene Plan, the box set?
Mm-hmm.
Remind me what the intent is, just briefly, in terms of the non-regulatory documents? So, you know, the, for instance, the design, um, and the vision, how is that intended to be, uh, in form? If it's non-regulatory?
Great question. Um, they're intended to work together, and so part of the reasoning behind bringing you a sneak peek of the handbook is to show you and to show the community that that work will be available to inform community discussions.
Okay.
At the same time as we're contemplating adopting new regulatory code in the South Willamette area. Those two can work together. Um, the vision is less of a guidance document, it's more documenting what, what we did to come up with the pillars and the whole ideas behind them and Envision Eugene. Um, but that's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just, uh, is there gonna be any reference in any of the policy or code language to these non-regulatory documents, or is it just basically guidance in terms of intent when you get, when you get to applicability?
I think they're just guidance. I mean, when, if you're thinking that.
They are, right.
Yeah.
There is some thinking about the design handbook, at, at the guideline level, they could provide information into a future design review process.
Okay.
Um, but they're not written that way now. They're written as, as guidelines that are non-regulatory to inspire and, and help, um, help the community visualize the kind of development that we're after, um, in a different way for visual thinkers, for people in the neighbors, in the community that wanna know what we mean. Uh, that's how we're looking at it at this point, and we know that we also have a lot of future work to do on design review in particular, um, that will get much more specific because as things become criteria, they can't be so subjective, they can't be guidance anymore.
Yeah.
I have myself in the queue, and I have three questions. First one is, uh, you talked about the diagram, Metro Plan Amendments and the diagram amendments, and amending the land use diagram to redesignate expansion areas, and I'm, I'm assuming that also redesignates the areas within the UGB, um, that we're, or have we already done that?
We've already done. We've already redesign, right. So you did the, the residential redesignations came through. So the only thing.
And the employment and industrial, we've already redone.
Right. I don't believe there were any redesignations there, it was just changes to the zoning code. So, right, the only redesignations as part of this will be the expansion areas.
Okay, okay. Second question then is on the phase one, on the Eugene Comprehensive Plan and how we kind of transition all of this in, um, have we, well, I'm sure we've thought about it, but do we have kind of a, a plan on how that's going to?
Roughly?
Well, yeah, I guess, because I can see there, there might be some conflicts, obviously, between something that's been recently changed, something that hasn't yet been changed or that we missed, and do we have some language or some method of when a conflict comes up, which one's going to control and how that might?
That's a good question that I will bring to Emily Jerome and see what, uh, her response is for that particular one. Something, yeah.
And then my.
Something we definitely need to consider, though.
Okay. Then my third question is on the, uh, just the sequence of all of this. Do we have or could we get easily, um, kind of a, I'm thinking of like a flow chart of what, what's gonna happen first, what's gonna happen second, uh, how this is all gonna flow as we go through all of this?
Pretty much gonna be one giant package.
One giant package?
Yeah, one giant package, with the exception of the Transportation System Plan will be a separate document.
Okay, so it'll all get rolled into one, one big approval, and that's?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, this, everything I've showed you would be one giant package, with the exception of the TSP is kind of traveling separately but is related.
Okay. I was thinking that last page on our AIS.
Ah.
Um, some of these things that.
And those, I think I covered all those, with the exception of, I mean, the only thing that's slightly different, the box set, the, the non-regulatory components of the box set don't need to be adopted in the same way.
Right.
That all of these amendments and documents do, so that might be in a separate document, but everything else is, yeah, big package.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan?
Um, two questions, and I, I think Commissioner Randa was getting at this, and maybe I didn't quite hear the answer, but we have some newer hierarchies of documents, and I think we've asked this before, is there gonna be in the, I, some portion of the box diagram, sort of a discussion as to how priorities work out, because we will have refinement plans in areas that now have special area, um, and then we're going to have, I think I heard Teri say this, that the community design handbook is intended to be a guideline, however, I think you said something about that during a hearing or an appeal, that a hearings officer may rely on this document for, okay, maybe, I thought I misunderstood that, but I wanna make sure of that, because as once it becomes.
Yeah.
Some decision for hearing, it becomes law, not guidelines.
Definitely not, definitely not. I was trying to say that the design guidelines could provide a starting point for a conversation about future criteria under design review, but they are separate things.
Okay, I think it needs to be real clear on that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because as we move down, sort of, years from now, some of that discussion gets lost, and all of a sudden, guidelines sort of become more than just guidelines, they start to slowly slip into code or hearing decisions or whatever else, and all of a sudden, then they are required, so.
So we wanna be really clear in the beginning of each of these parts of the, the box set, you know, what the purpose of the plan is and how you can use it, and so the intent is the comprehensive plan is going to be the only regulatory piece of this.
I think it'll be real important, when there's conflicts between refinement plans and special area plans, that that's really described as to which becomes most important for decision-making.
Commissioner Borowski?
Um, okay, a couple of questions. So on the Public Facilities and Service Plan, as I recall, that was one that still had overlapping jurisdiction with.
Right, so we still share that with Springfield, yes.
So that would be a joint with all three boards?
I don't think so. I think because of the nature of the amendments, um, they're not affecting anything regional, they're our own local system, that it doesn't require Springfield's participation.
That was just a question, because I remember that was the one, one area.
No, we're not cha, I don't believe we need to change any policy language, just some of the projects that are only in Eugene's jurisdiction.
And then on the land use code amendment, the overlay zones and those types of things, how much of that will you be bringing to this body in, in the formulation thing?
So the overlay zones absolutely will be coming back to you. I mean, I know that certain members here are already participating on the subcommittee, and then we intend to bring that back in June, actually, so you can give it a full review before any start of any formal adoption process.
Okay.
So that's definitely, yeah, that's absolutely one of the pieces that will be back to you.
Okay, and then, um, the community design handbook, I kind of also have some of the same concerns. Um, I think it's real important that we put in front there and educate people that this is just, you know, visionary, um, and that, like I've heard, you know, we, you, in some of the appeals that we've seen, and even on some of the things within Envision Eugene, there's conflicting text in different pillars. So people will say, when they bring something up, well, this, part of this pillar in, in Envision Eugene is what you're supposed to hang your hat on, and then there's another section that you're using to do something else. So I think we're just adding one more of those into the mix, so that when people come up and say, well, this is the way it's supposed to look, look, it's right in your, in your city's thing, and I think it will become part of a, you know, whether or not a hearings official looks at it or not, but I, I'm very, um, wanna make sure that that gets really put up front, that this is just a visionary thing. And then one more thing, just, and this is just for, for me, looking at the, uh, bringing the streets to life slide that we had up there, um, and this was just because I'm affected by it personally. In those photos, there are two A-frame signs, which are allowed only in the downtown zone. If we're putting this out as a citywide thing, having A-frame signs in our, in our number one publication, when two blocks from there, you can't put an A-frame sign, I don't think is, is appropriate.
Thanks.
So, I, I mean, it's a beautiful picture. If you could take the picture with the A-frame sign gone, I'd be happy with it, but as somebody who's been done by the, by the compliance officer for having an A-frame sign on my property, I don't appreciate that.
God, you.
Commissioner. I'm gonna. Okay, I have Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Taylor, and since Commissioner Taylor's had one round, I'll go Commissioner Baker.
Okay, uh, just a couple of little things. One, under the public facilities, uh, it's not mentioned here, but obviously we're adding industrial district in that, and we could be the need for a new substation, and I didn't see electricity, which I assume would be Eugene only because we have our own public.
Yeah, it's true. I mean, we have actually been working with, um, EWEB on that, and there happens to be a substation or one planned over in that area, so I didn't put it on here because it's not a required that we address it, but, I mean, we definitely are working with EWEB on that. we definitely are working with EWEB on that. So no, they will have electricity.
It was included in the plan.
Yeah.
And then regarding the, the comprehensive plan, we're sort of taking some language from the, from the joint plan that we previously were operating under and making it specifically Eugene. I just had, didn't, didn't know if, there were some cases, I mean, I'll give you an example. Example is, the comprehensive plan always had densities in low, medium, and high. And that didn't overlap very well with our, our plan designations. I just don't know if the plan is to sort of just move the text into a Eugene-only version and then maybe consider, you know, making it more applicable.
So we're not that far in residential, but I can speak to employment. We did use the existing policies to influence, but we didn't just drag them and drop them all into there. So we looked at them, we looked back at, you know, what the state requirements are now. We looked at, you know, what we've heard through all of Envision Eugene about employment. We also did look at the metro plan, but some of them, some of them are really outdated. Some of them don't really apply to us. Some of them we expanded on. So it was really, it's really a combination.
Okay, so it's not just Phase One, you've got to do a quick Phase Two?
Right, no, we're not just dropping them in and calling them good. So we're really being comprehensive about it, actually.
And, and another question on the, the zone, on that plan, I guess, or in the zone changes. I'm not, and maybe this has already been, I know we had parcel-specific.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be, is that already done or is that going to be part of this?
That's not going to be part of Phase One. So of the Eugene Comprehensive Plan, eventually we will have a parcel-specific diagram. It's not going to be done in time for this Phase One. So, but it is one of the later phases. So we are working towards that. I will say for any expansion areas, those will be parcel-specific, absolutely. And the urban growth boundary line will be, be very clear where that is.
Okay, just to make it so we have less conflict.
Yes, absolutely. No, that's our goal.
And my last question is regarding the, you know, the four, for-
The box set.
Box set, yeah. I mean, it seems to me that people will use the community vision to evaluate and propose maybe ma- minor changes or major changes to the comprehensive plan based upon the, you know, the original vision. There might be some minor tweaks. So it seems to me that although it's, it's historical, there is some benefit in, I mean, it's serious, clearly a benefit in having it there because it allows you to measure, you know, the concrete implementation based upon what you originally had hoped to do. So I just wanted to say that, that, so for that reason, and you might, I assume that there might be places where it's referred to that you had a pillar on this or a pillar on that, part of the, the box set.
Yeah, in the box set, we're planning to have a, how to use this plan that's consistent in all four pieces. And it kind of does the crosswalk and shows how to, how the pieces relate to one another. And I totally agree with you about the vision. It sets kind of the intent for the plan and the goals that we're hoping to achieve. So it, it will have life after its adoption.
Before we move to second round, Commissioner Mills, Commissioner Jaworski, any, okay. I have Commissioner Taylor and then I have myself. I have a second question too, so.
Commissioner Duncan brought this up. And actually, I've been curious how refinement plans fit into this because obviously some of them are, are very outdated, 1980, you know. So is there an intention, what is going to, what is the role that they're going to continue to play?
I mean, as part of this adoption, they're not changing. I mean, we're making sure that there's no conflicts in terms of hierarchy, but I, you know, I, as part of the Envision Eugene recommendation, there is the recommendation to do area planning and neighborhood planning, starting, I'm not remembering exactly what the recommendation says, but I mean, that's sort of, that would be the intent moving forward. Because we do reckon that, I mean, there are areas without any kind of planning done and there are definitely plans that are very outdated. So, I mean, that's some, that's kind of a future.
Phase, so it's, it's definitely projected to be, they're projected to be looked at and updated as part of-
Right, and when River Road, for instance, River Road, Santa Clara is, is first on that list and called out that and the university area. Those are both called out in the Envision Eugene recommendation that we'll start those after adoption of the urban growth boundary and then-
You've got a timeframe on the first two, but you really don't have a timeframe on the others.
You know, I feel like the recommendation says something about every several years, but, yeah.
Every two years, I think it's a, a goal of an additional neighborhood plan. But the solution's going to be different depending on the neighborhood. As Alyssa said, some areas don't even have one and then other areas have very outdated ones. And then we're adding new areas to the city that are going to need some master planning as well. So it's a future phase of our work plan to figure out what the next priorities will be.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Great. And I don't want to get into too much detail about the Community Design Handbook. I just had two impressions just from the slides. One of them was similar to Commissioner Borowski and that is, some of, I notice if it is citywide, some of the photos are in a same, in the same area. So I think it would be exciting to see other parts of the City of Eugene represented. And, you know, for instance, Streets to Life, there's Too Large Downtown and maybe just diversifying the photos. Because I think, like you said, there's a lot more examples. Whittaker, yeah, Alamo, South Alamo. The other is transparency. The other thing, and I know you're conscious of this, like the Cube Building, for instance, is a good example, although it's the lead, it's a lead building. There are, it was very controversial because it's essentially technology that brought it to lead to a point system, but in terms of sustainability, the thermal envelope is, it's questionable. So just being careful what we-
It's a city building.
Yeah, yeah. So just being careful because I think sustainability is also something. So for encouraging transparency over a really good, solid thermal envelope and what's appropriate for our climate, because technology allowed that to happen and it met the lead points doesn't mean that it's necessarily what we want to continue to have in our community.
Yeah, I mean, we've had, I wasn't part of it, but we have discussed, you know, various aspects with the AIA and the Design Excellence. Part of the, kind of the compromise though that we have to make is that we do want all these examples to be in Eugene. And so we're not, not every single picture, so I have every single aspect of what we think is the most ideal design. We have to concentrate on the one thing maybe that they do that's good, that, you know, would be something that, you know, would bear repeating, you know, as far as the guidelines. You know, we're, we're looking at it as a very big picture, you know, as what makes a place walkable, what makes, you know, a place livable. So I, I definitely hear what you're saying. And I think within the Community Design Guide as a whole, we are trying to diversify more, but it is, it is pretty diverse and we are getting a lot of good examples. And we're going to continue to, you know, have photographers really go and target specific areas to get images of. And like I say, in the last couple of years, you know, a lot of time, originally we had a lot of placewards that were from Portland and all, you know, all over the country, really. And now we have been able to, you know, hone it down to really being, you know, Eugene-specific because there's a lot of really great, you know, projects that even in the last few years have come to fruition here. So I hear what you're saying, but we're also, you know, we have to bear in mind that they're not going to have every, you know, item, you know, that we want. I mean, there, there are some really great buildings that front onto like huge surface parking lots, for instance. And so the question is, okay, well, we know this is, you know, this has a lot of facade elements or an urban plaza that, you know, are really successful and, you know, that the neighbors know and, you know, really, you know, utilizes some of the guidelines. But we also know that it faces onto a parking lot, which isn't, you know, that's not an ideal situation. That's not, you know, a pattern that we want to repeat.
So I'm, I'm just going to reiterate what I said. I, I do understand what you, you're saying. I also heard but. So I do recognize that I would love to see City of Eugene photos. I would just be, one is, as diverse as we can get would be great because it represents more of the entire community. Two, if there's an example that actually is counter to another one of the Envision Eugene values, I would not include it. And those are the two things.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I, I want to bring up something that people have said, just to make sure I'm a little clear here. The Eugene Comprehensive Plan, for the most part, as far as, I'll call it pecking order or hierarchy, will replace the Metro Plan as far as when we're reviewing things?
Not necessarily. So the Metro Plan's actually a regional comprehensive plan. And because we're only doing, only going to be adding part of that, you know, taking part of it out of the Metro Plan and putting in our local comprehensive plan, there will still be elements of the Metro Plan that we'll be using. It's going to be an incremental, over time, we will eventually migrate to-
But it'll only be those things that are outside of Eugene?
Right, so, not, no, not necessarily. I mean, in the beginning, you know, if you look at those five bullet points, there's a lot of other topics that aren't covered in those. So those will still be housed in the Metro Plan.
Until we're done.
Until we're, we've migrated them all over. So there will be, you know, you'll have-
Some, but for now, the comprehensive plan, once adopted, will be looked at more strongly. And then I imagine underneath of that is refinement plans as they have been. And what I don't understand is, special area studies or whatever, will they be a standalone or will they be then folded into the refinement plan in which the special area study was?
Um, you know, a lot of, there are some special area studies that really just have the same standing as a refinement plan. So I'm not sure-
Really?
Yeah, I mean, that's typically, they're kind of, I mean, a special area study and a refinement plan are often very similar documents.
Okay.
Sometimes the special areas within the refinement plan, but hmm. So I'm not sure I can answer your question.
Well, I just want to know if we ever get into, you know, appeals and things coming to us, where will be, where, at least I'll be looking to say, well, where do we get this direction?
Okay, okay. Those are good things that will make sure that are clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's good to have the clarity.
I'm sure the lawyers will be telling us which ones.
Yeah. But it'd be good if it was in the document so you knew right up front. Okay, no, that's, I've heard that one loud and clear and I've got a couple stars by it here, so be following up.
The second thing is just a quick question on, let's just take a look at walkable streets. Now, you'll be showing, I imagine in, in that section, you'll be, you'll be talking about factors that influence walkable streets, all these nice things. With all these nice things, how do you get from here to there? In other words, if a community or someone is looking at these and saying, well, let's go try to implement these things, how do they fold in to become part of these things which might only be looked at every five years or less, hopefully? But I'm just saying, how, how does that happen? Because I know people will be asking me that. Oh, this looks great. Oh, we like that. We want to move in that direction. Well, how does one do that? Will this describe any of that? Or we just let it say, here are some nice things for walkable streets, here's a network of complete streets. If you want to do these, how, how do you get it done, is what I'm saying, if, if they like what they see?
I have a couple ideas. I mean, I think one way that would be useful is if a community organization, for example, becomes familiar with the document and likes what they see and supports it, it becomes a resource for them to use in pre-application meetings with developers to point out things that they like. I think of it as a kind of visual resource for the community. Obviously, it's of use to the design community, but as Jennifer was saying, we really envision it as a document that's usable to more than one user group. So a lot of these issues, we hope to suss out at the open house and we're all invited to that in June. We can talk about that, the different ways that it is used by different people in the community and, and try to get your ideas for that. And I'd say a name comment about the photos and about specific locations that you think should be photographed and included. We welcome those suggestions and want to get them on our list so the photographer can go photograph them when it's sunny or rainy, there's great rain protection, something like that.
In that case, you know, it can be brought to a developer, but it has no standing and the developer wouldn't have to listen. Is there something the city is going to be doing through its other documents to bring about these street connections and others? I guess I'll ask it that way because there, it has some standing and can have some authority.
I'll take a shot at this. It seems like if we go back to all the conversations we've had about the Community Design Handbook, there's really three main ways that it, that we try to implement the design vision for the community. Inspire, require, and invest. And that, I think, still stands. And this falls into the inspire category. So as Terry said, it's all about seeding that conversation and giving the community or anybody, policymakers, decision-makers, neighborhood leaders, developers, anybody, the tools to have a conversation with common language. And that's really what it's all about. In terms of implementation, there's a huge toolkit that we can draw from and the toolkit is growing. It used to be our capital improvement program and neighborhood refinement plans. We now have neighborhood planning, we have special area zones. I think what's going on in South Alamo is a great example of a manifestation of these kinds of principles in a specific area. There could be lots of other things to do, I think, plans like the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. There's a whole list of actions in that that are really well-aligned with a lot of these basic principles. So it's going to manifest itself in lots and lots of different ways. There could be a, I think, a SNAP, what is it, Sustainable Neighborhood Action Plans, we're still doing those. There was a pilot project that Ethan Nelson and some other folks did out in the Bethel area, building a better Bethel. So another kind of a tool for how a neighborhood can look at specific parts of the community and say, which of these principles are important to elevate and how can we get that done? I think there's lots of ways to implement it, absolutely. But right now, we don't have anything that helps us understand what it is we want to implement. So this will be a big step in that direction.
Can I add something?
Sure.
I, I think what, what's great about some of these guiding documents is that, especially when the refinement plans, when it's time to update them, they will inform that process, can inform. And the communities that are within the refinement plan then can look at some of these guiding documents. So I, I think that there are benefits that you can see realized in more policy form or potentially.
Well, I, I have one question on the monitoring. As we get into this and we have, you know, we've talked about revisiting periodically and I'm, I'm just curious if we've got language in there yet on the revisiting on the, you know, the UGB and our housing stock and, and land and that, that's real clear from the standpoint of, okay, at two years or five years or whatever we've determined, we are going to look at this and we are going to either say, yeah, we're okay, or we need to do something, rather than just have it be maybe more vague and aspirational. And I just want to make sure that part, because to me, that's a critical component of all of this, is that revisiting as we go along and making sure that, that, that we hold ourselves accountable to that. And I guess I'm just curious how strong the, the language will be on that.
I guess I'd start by saying, yes. I think everyone shares that aspiration, that the monitoring program be real, the commitment be real and codified in an ordinance, number one. One of the tools we're looking at as an example is the recently adopted Climate Recovery Ordinance. It sets goals, it sets benchmarks, it, it's very, very clear how often the reporting is done and who's going to oversee the work. So that very conversation is happening at Technical Resource Group right now and that's one of the pieces we intend to bring back for the commission's input as well. Yeah, I agree with your assessment of what needs to be in there.
Okay, great, thank you. I have Commissioners Baker, Borowski, and Duncan.
Now, just going back to the comprehensive plan, there's Phase One and then there's the later phase that includes other pieces.
Mm-hmm.
So those other pieces are going to be housing and?
Yeah, so if you, I didn't bring it with me, but we had a table of contents that we shared with you, it must have been in November, but there's a housing chapter, there's one on, I am not remembering what they all are, but one that has a, do you remember that?
Neighborhood livability and community health is one of them.
Okay.
And one maybe that ever, something-
Natural resources and hazard.
Natural resources, yeah. Natural resources, yeah. So there's a couple, and then there will be, the land use diagram will also be housed in there.
And Steve, we'll bring that full outline as part of your work session on the Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah.
Okay, so even if we're not covering, just so we know what we're covering.
Right, right.
And, then I have some, just a question or comment. It seems, amending the refinement plan seems problematic because of the process that's going to be involved. I assume that there's a hierarchy of these plans in any case, so unless there's really a gross conflict, it seems like you're really not going to be...
Right, I think it's unlikely that we will be, you know, needing to do anything, but I just wanted to flag that. I mean, it's really, in my mind, a legal question, and Emily is looking at that to see, you know, to make sure that that's clear. But they're all adopted at different times, under different, you know, circumstances, so we just want to make sure that there's not going to be any confusion when we adopt a new local plan.
And the only other thing that I was going to suggest is that, I mean, obviously, your first pass is going through the plans and seeing if there's any obvious, it would be useful to know in advance if there are, you know, five plans that have conflicts, that you're, even if you're not sure that you need to amend them, just so that we have an idea of the, what might be involved, that were, you know, it's only one plan, it's a lot different than if it's seven, right?
Right.
And also, you know, you'd have a rough idea of the kind of scale of the implications, so.
Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, I have some questions about the monitoring segment of it. And, you know, you mentioned that it would be, would be codified, that it's going to be, you know, we're going to go back, we're going to monitor it, we're going to do this and that. I guess my question is, is who will the decision-making point B with the monitoring? So let's say you've got it set up and says, in three years, we're going to go and we're going to look at the numbers. In three years, we look at the numbers, and the housing mix that we thought was 55-45 is 60-40. And the population thing that we thought was this number actually turns out to be this number. And that, that makes for what would be a substantial change and possible action to it. You monitor that, you bring it up, is it the council that is going to make that decision? And if the council decides to ignore those numbers, what is the implication? So if you've got numbers that prove that it's 65-40, or 65-35 percentage, but there's a majority on the council that doesn't want to accept that, what good is the monitoring?
That's a really good question. We haven't thought that through all the way yet, but the current discussion about monitoring is that, yes, the decision-makers eventually are the council. But the conversation right now is around, what's the right advisory body to advise staff on administration of the program? So we know it's probably not the Technical Resource Group, it's probably not an existing commission, but it's probably a combination of those groups, ERD, Planning Commission, Sustainability Commission, Human Rights Commission membership, because this plan is about more than tax lot X and, you know, specific land use focus. It's much broader than that, so we need an interdisciplinary body to look at the reports, and then to make recommendations to council. That being said, this is our state-acknowledged plan that we're talking about, so there is another check and balance there, with the state having approved our plan, if someone said, looks like your plan had a key assumption of this, and now your council is ignoring that, there are ways that that could be challenged. But honestly, we haven't even contemplated that scenario yet, I'm sure it'll be part of the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it definitely needs to be part of the discussion, because, because that is a political decision, and, and so whether that can be put into the code, so that if council acts against it, then it does have the appellate, you know, you do have the ability to take it to a different body to have a jurisdiction, you know, to look into it. I don't know how that works, but I just, I can foresee something like that happening with, with the monitoring. And what good is monitoring if you don't have five votes to pass it? And just, just want to throw that out there. I always look at the political side.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan.
Yeah, sorry, I want to bring us back to the Design Handbook just a little bit again. I appreciate the idea of having local photos in here and only, but there seems to me there has to be a way that this document also looks outside of Eugene, because I don't think we've hit a home run on everything yet here, and there may be changes, that somebody comes in and says, gee, here's, something was done in ABC USA, and we'd really like to do it here, and we'd go, wow, you know, it's really not in the guidelines, you know? So we've got to have, I hope it has the ability to, to really be able to change enough to really look at new ideas and changes in what's going on in housing, or the economy, or whatever else, so that it's a, it becomes sort of a more active document. I've seen way too many, too many plans, and I could see something like this happening, where we finish it, and pretty soon it just slides on to a, to the shelf somewhere, and starts collecting dust in five years or eight years, and it never really gets updated and changed as we actually find other things that are real important. So I hope that that's put into this document, so that we recognize that life changes all the time.
Yeah, I would just say one little comment about that, which is, that's part of the beauty of it being non-regulatory, is that we don't have to have a council vote to approve an update to it, we can have a community conversation about it.
But we have to have a work plan approved to be able to do that work.
Yes.
And that's where it tends to get lost.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Taylor.
I just had a follow-up on Commissioner Baker, one question on refinement plan amendments. I'm just assuming that you have had, you have to have, as far as timing, all the refinement plan amendments done before you adopt the Comprehensive Plan, otherwise you're adopting conflicts. Is that correct?
They would be done together. They would be done several, yeah, the same, like I said, it's going to be one giant adoption package, so they would be all part of the same package if we find that we need to make any changes to the refinement plans.
All right, so they will have been looked good. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Duncan. Actually, that's really where I was going, is if it's a guideline, let's have it be a true guideline, and that's really, that was really the point I was trying to make. And if we can't find any in Eugene, let's not put a photo that isn't reflecting that guideline. Maybe we do project something that's actually achieving what we want. Yeah.
Okay, I'll go. A functioning multi-way boulevard would be nice to have in there, we don't have that yet.
Well, thank you. Looking forward to, oh, wait, I had myself in the queue. I forgot, I skipped myself. No, I didn't, nope, I did that. Never mind. All right. Well, thank you, and I guess at this point, I would like to maybe get a sense from the commission on how you felt about our three-minute dry run. Did it seem, did it seem to work? Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, I think it'll work fine.
I know today was a lot less.
Yeah, I think the modi, yeah, well, that's what I mean, because I think as we move forward, it's going to be real critical. And not knowing how the package is going to come to the commission, I think it would be helpful if, there were several people who spoke on, say, the design, and then it got off to something else, and then we kind of came back to it and stuff. And it seems to me if we can control the section that we're talking about in a way that you kind of deal with it at one time, and you can always, at the end, maybe go back after you've dealt with whatever sections you want to deal with and go back, because everybody thinks later on, oh, I wish I'd have said something. There needs to be a way to come back to that, but I think that this idea of just sort of jumping through topics back and forth, depending on which commission, commissioner gets to speak, kind of can cause trouble. Again, particularly when we get to very technical parts of the plan, I think it's going to be real important to stay on task with those, so you kind of get through it. It's going to help staff a lot easier get through it, too, so just some way to...
I think we can structure our presentation as well, when it comes to that.
That would be helpful, yeah. If the presentation's structured in that way, then we can stay focused on that particular section.
And again, I think, before you leave a topic, the chair could ask, is there anybody else that wants to speak on this? Maybe I want my fourth, my fourth turn, or something like that.
Sure. Well, and I did try, as we were going through, I know in that first round, there were a couple that hadn't spoken, and I tried to open it up there, so, okay. All right. Did the timing work out okay? I didn't hear the timer go off, so we kept it within our three minutes, yeah, yeah. How did, how did we do overall? Did we, any of us even come close?
Like, four and nine seconds was the closest, very good.
Okay, good. All right. Well, any other items from staff? Oh, Commissioner Borowski.
Not from staff, I've got one from commission.
Okay, let's do staff first.
Just FYI about upcoming meetings on moving ahead. So remember, that's the multimodal corridor study, that's a partnership between City of Eugene and LTD, and there's the first founding board meeting that some of you are invited to, that volunteered, May 4th, and then we're giving our update to City Council and LTD Board on May 11th.
There is the council work session tonight on Envision Eugene, as well as possibly tiny houses?
Micro housing is also on the agenda.
Micro housing, okay. That's one that's near, dear to my heart, so. Robin, any other staff?
I don't think we have any additional items to add, just, you know, busy schedule coming up here in the next couple of months, it'll be exciting. I have not heard yet what the date is for the interviews for...
May 7th.
Is it May 7th? Okay. So interviews on May 7th for Planning Commissioner, seats, two of them open, and we'll hear more about that. I think calls are going out early this week to those folks.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Duncan?
I just wanted to follow up on that. Could you get us kind of where the votes fell? And who's getting, because it was my impression all the calls happened last week.
We can follow up.
Yeah, we'll follow up on that. I was just going through, I was out on Friday, so I might now have the latest information, so I'll follow up with you on that.
Commissioner Baker?
I was just trying to confirm, so the only scheduled meeting we have this month is May 11th, is that correct?
Thursday. 11th, and then on the Comprehensive Plan, and 18th on South Walnut.
Commissioner Borowski?
Couple of things from the, sorry, the CDBG Board, or which I sit on as a member of the Planning Commission, Matt and the city adopted the 2015 consolidation priority plan last week, and that's a five-year planning document as to how they think CDBG will be used. Tonight, they are going to be presenting and putting out for adoption the next year's one-year plan, so that work for this cycle has gone through. So that's kind of one of my subcommittees that has happened. I did have questions about tonight, on the consent calendar, there's a, Item D is the initiation of land use code amendments and code maintenance, I was wondering if you could talk to that and tell me what that is about?
Absolutely. It's really just a handful of fixes to correct some errors and omissions, and then another handful, and I mean by four, to bring our code up to consistency with state law, so there's, it's a really, really small package. It's kind of what we thought we could do within our existing work program, and frankly, the impetus, there's been a bunch of issues recently, you might be familiar with the one where hearings official, when there's an appeal of a hearings official, and it talks about who has standing to file an appeal, it does not include anybody who spoke at the hearing, they had to have turned in written testimony, so that's a correction that's being made. Another one, for instance, is as part of the Eweb Riverfront Code Amendments, the parking exempt area map was changed for the Eweb site, but somehow inadvertently, a boundary on the West University parking exempt area was also changed, so we're changing that back. So it's, it's just a number of corrections, and then bringing them up to legal consistency. So we're just asking them to initiate that tonight. It is a very small, very modest package, but we're hoping that we can get the ball rolling, that we could do code maintenance every year, and fix those corrections and omissions, and bring it up to consistent, consistency with state law, where we're not.
Okay. And then, again, one last thing, I'm going to bring this up again to Robin, he, I mentioned at our last meeting, about the fact that we do have a new building, that's the first major building built in the Walnut mixed-use zone, and I was hoping that we could check and see how both city staff dealt with the Form-Based Code and the developers of 2125 Franklin, while they're still engaged in the process. You know, I'd hate to have us go and try and do a follow-up with them when they're, when they're moved on to three different, you know, three different cities down the road, so I think it's, it is time sensitive that we at least check in with them to see how the process worked, so that we can have that information going forward.
Yep, and we've taken your advice to heart, and already started looking into that, so thank you for that.
That's a good idea.
All right. He's grabbing the gavel. Any other items? Looks like we're ready to adjourn, so, return.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I just...